Just need approval of the agendas presented. Motion by Bo, seconded by Amanda, all in favor. Six oh? Well, and there it is. Um, just need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Yeah, I'll do that.
So we've got a motion by Bo, seconded by Amanda, all in favor. Five oh. Moving along, we got a presentation by Mr. Twinner. Recommendations for this football practice field.
Um, I'll try to keep it as short as I can for you guys when we get out of here and out of the rain. Um, grass needs, grass really needs three things to, to grow. It needs sunlight up here. There's no shortage of that. Um, it, it's gonna need, um, it needs water, obviously, and we've got water over here. Um, and then you've gotta have something for it to grow in. Um, the biggest issue that this hillside's probably gonna have, um, you could, you could grow grass up here, no problem at all. Um, but if you're using it every day as a football practice facility, that, that grass needs replenished, especially, you know, kids are standing on it planting. Um, this grass is real soft and young like this, and you can see me pulling it out with a flat hay dude like that. Um, and that's what its purpose is up here. And if you're gonna do that, you're gonna have to increase fertility. You're gonna have to, and it's gonna have to have some water on it. Um, the other thing, and Coach Duke, you stop me if I'm wrong, or anybody stop me if I'm wrong. It's not really, it doesn't simulate a real playing field as, as well as our actual playing field. You'd like to see it. I'm looking across here, I'm probably seeing six feet of ri- maybe five feet of rise between here and the other end of our property here. Um, and that, that's not ideal. Um, you look at our playing field, and it's got one of the heavier crowns, probably any turf field, um, that you'd see, and it's probably two and a half feet across there. Um, so ideally, what, what you could do in here, we still need to keep the slope. You don't wanna bring it down exactly level. But we need to reduce that slope a little bit on there, so it's more like a regular playing field. You could do that two ways. Uh, the cheaper option would probably be to just drop that in down there. You could take some of that dirt down there, push it this way. Leave yourself with like eighteen inches of fall across there. If you did that, you'd probably have to put a little bit of a retaining wall up on that end or something like that. Or you could come in here and you could just crown it right here in the middle, run you a swell across the backside. You can kinda see where that mailbox, or not mailbox, that birdhouse is at. And you could run it out to daylight in that parking lot down there and just run your water. It's already kinda naturally sloping that way, just kinda run it that way as well. Um, the guy that put together the quote you guys saw estimated, um, I think he estimated like twenty thousand to do that. I've talked to another guy. He said twelve would probably be more than enough. Um, so you would definitely wanna open that up for bids, cause especially, a lot of dirt movers will give you a lot of different things. I think you guys have done enough construction. You kinda know that at this point. But the biggest thing is if we're gonna come up here and do that, and we're gonna put, you're gonna put grass seed out here, you're gonna have to put some kinda irrigation up here. Luckily, you have water up there. It, it would need to be pressure tested to, I believe, forty-five PSI. Um, but, uh, it, it's enough to run that spool, but the bad thing about running that spool is somebody has to come up here every fifteen, twenty minutes and crank that thing back fifteen to twenty feet. And by the time you water the whole practice facility, you have to run it all the way out one side, run it all the way back, run it all the way out down the middle, run it all the way back, run it all the way out to the left side, run it all the way back. So, uh, you know, in the summertime, you know, in order to water this, in order for that thing to run its full cycle down there, it takes about three and a half hours. It's about the same thing to run up here, except some guy has to manually do it every day. And that, um, ideally, you'd wanna get water on this thing about, probably about every three days. Um, is especially in the heat of the summer, they're gonna start practicing after the Fourth of July. Um, grass starts going into, especially your cool season grasses are gonna start going into dormancy more. You do have quite a bit of Bermuda up here that you're just never gonna get rid of. Um, I mean, you could get rid of it, I guess, if you really wanted to, but, um, I would rather embrace it because they're using this facility during the middle of summer. And that's a warm season grass, which is gonna handle that traffic, and it's gonna hold up a little bit better. But if you go out there and you walk out there, I mean, you, you guys can see that, that dirt's just, that dirt's just not gonna hold grass seed if it gets, if it keeps getting used, um, as heavy as it, as it has been. So. Do you guys have any questions for me? I'm basically telling you the same thing I told you in my video.
If we were to do this, will there be grass in time for the summer?
No.
So is it feasible to do half, Coach Duke, and half next year?
You know, you cut this in half. On half of it, get grass established on half, then do the other half.
We, we could certainly do that. There's some pretty big holes down there from where, from where some trees were removed, so we'd have to take care of that. This is about, there's a number of dips and swales in here and enough holes that we could kind of avoid because we know where they're at. There's a lot more. But we'd also have there are some nights where there's grades three through twelve. You're talking about, there was a hundred and twenty, hundred and thirty again. Yeah, I mean, you can see where Bob has taken the sled already. I mean, pushing it as far as don't eat up the grass with it. That's, that's part of it too. But to answer your question, good, it takes some, it takes some space management. Just to get it. It's quite an undertaking to get it all right now. Add grass on it by, I just didn't know we're limited on space.
Are you wanting to simulate a full-size football field, practice field?
Right now, we only use it, we can only get like forty yards out of this, the way it is right now. So we can't, we can't get a full-size. If we do forty yards by the full width, fifty-three and a third, we could get a forty-yard surface, which takes you down to about the edge. And then it puts you dangerously close to the red shed. Um, and we have to stay away from the water and stuff already. So it's not, it's not a full field anywhere, the way, the way it sits. Then there's, I don't think there's a day that goes by, fellows, that the kids don't ask to go down there because of the conditions up here. We're gonna buy a lot of, a lot of tape to tape a lot of ankles with the amount of holes that are here. And the fifty-three and a third goes right up to their property line. When you talk about width, it goes right up to their line and brings you, as you can see, the line goes right here. So you've got just about enough space to get forty yards worth of field.
Yes, that's my question is how are we gonna, how are we gonna improve this space, have adequate space?
Well, this is something that we need to and it's an empty lot over there. We go off there. Best time to plan a three, years ago or today. I mean, at some point, you got, you need to fix it. So if we have to fix it, and we have to adjust, we have to adjust. We do know that, you know, starting in October, before the season's over, there's no lights. We have to go where there's lights because it gets dark around five thirty, six o'clock. So that's another thing that we have to talk, we have to plan. We do, I mean, we talked about running portable lights and bringing them up here and stuff like that, just so that we could stay off of that field. I could show you pictures of what this looked like in July and what it looked like in October. And in July, there was some patches of grass, but it was dirt, and in October, it was all dirt. And dirt's not a terrible thing. It's soft, it's not soft.
But it doesn't, it's not watered, it's not, right?
I come up here and I'll, I'll put it out, but I can't, I can't put four hours every three days up here and do my other, and do my other duties that I'm required to by the district. I mean, I can go down to the building, do something for fifteen minutes. Then I come back up here. Nope. Doesn't retract. And even if it did retract itself back up here, you'd still have to come up and sling it out, and so then, you know, you're looking at, if I have to run, make a visit or something, you know, I can go do that. But you could look at getting another water reel, if you wanted to do that. Um, but that can only run one reel at a time, probably, I would imagine.
So does that spigot head require pressure to put in?
I don't know. You'd have to get it tested. Um, all in one, we'll do the testing with the people that winterize our, uh, winterize our system down there. They can tell you how many, I think the, I don't know if the city can do it or not. Did you, does it have what we need? So we got what we need up there then? Okay. So that's an option too. I mean, if that's what, uh, if that's what you guys, uh, wanna do, I mean, I'm happy to, I'm happy to come up here and pull, move the sprinkler around and everything as well. If we, if we can get that real fix, that would be, that would be a lot more helpful than coming up every fifteen minutes and having to move it around.
I think there needs more, some more legwork needs to be done. You said you talked to someone for twelve grand, twelve thousand.
You're gonna have to put it out for bid, I would assume, right?
What I mean, I don't have any idea. The square footage you're looking at here.
About an acre and a half.
So you take that, move around dirt, and you're looking at fertilizer, you're looking at seed.
I wouldn't even start looking at that until after you've moved your dirt and got your irrigation.
Right, but I mean, it's still an expense you're gonna incur.
Absolutely.
Doesn't matter if you look at it now or after the dirt's moved.
Yep.
You've still gotta plan for it.
Yeah.
It'd be nice to know, it'd be nice to know what we're getting into before we get into.
If you want my opinion, thirty-five thousand dollars. If that's what you're asking for, that would be my guess on it. In order to put, in order to come in and do your dirt work, do your irrigation, and your, um, seed and fertilizer and everything, and then you're looking at being able to practice and being able to start football practice. And not this summer, but the summer after that, is what would be an honest opinion, because by the time you get somebody in here to do your dirt work, it's gonna be July. You can't start grass seed in, you can't start grass seed in June and July. I would, I would say. And the best time to start it, the best time to establish it's gonna be in the fall. And then you're, then you're not, you can't be on it, you know, for six weeks. I mean, you just can't be on it. If there's as much bare earth as you would have up here, you can't be stomping over that stuff. So, and then the season's over, you know, and that grass goes into dormancy over the winter. So then in the springtime, you'd have spring of twenty-six would be my opinion. But that's, I guess, that's just, that's my guess.
Tell us, oh man, that, I don't, your guys' thoughts.
Pardon me, probably need to submit bids, like you said.
You dropped a, you dropped a glove there, um, Roxanne.
I think Mr. Twinner's right.
They, they could, they could get it on it, they could get on it as soon as, um, you, I mean, you could get on it in the, in the spring of twenty-six. I mean, it would be, it'd be established by then, for sure. I mean, we would be doing our first mowing on it in, in the springtime, or late fall of twenty-five.
It's okay to do that. The question I will ask you is where do you want us to practice while this is happening? Because the only feasible, I mean, we could talk about other spots, but we can't guarantee we have other spots, right? You can't guarantee that somebody else would say yes. So if that's the case, let's, I'm all in, happy to do it, but the expectation is we're gonna practice there every day.
Matt's gonna turn into this up here. If that, I mean, you're gonna have to spend as much money to repair that.
We could go over there. I, I don't know if there's any irrigation there, so it may, you may turn around and it'll look, it'll look like this when we're done, and then the financial cost to the district is what to fix that.
But you guys use it on Sundays for three hours and practice a couple times a week, and it's twenty-pound kids, not two-hundred-and-forty-pound kids twisting around on it.
Hey, you're still gonna have room for a student math.
While we're trying. I'm willing to help, however, and here I'm willing to, you know, I have the logistics of moving twice what that cost is, if you have to send it out and say, hey, this is one bid, but you're gonna do half, then you're gonna do half. Just so that we know the expectation of where we're gonna be. That also means gym classes every day, every week, and we're gonna increase traffic and
I tell, guys, I'd be honest with you. It, I don't, on my end, it would make me just as tickled happy if we could get that thing fixed up there. I'd, I'd be happy to pull that. Cause I can go make a visit, like make my SAE visit, take an hour, and then I can come back and, and move that, pull that reel back out.
What about bringing dirt in, Jason? Making a minimal ones here. Bring a dirt in, level up our areas that we gotta level, come in, aeriate. And then, hot dress it and then seed it and fertilize it.
Still don't think you'd be able to get on it by summertime, if we did that. You? I don't know. I'd be worried about it. It's gonna be young, um, and whatever topsoil you bring in. You're gonna make sure you're not bringing in weed seeds and everything else too, so. But I, I would ask, I would ask somebody, I would talk to somebody who runs an excavating business, more than me, I wouldn't.
I don't think you'll ever get that level out here.
I don't think you really. I can put some grass seed out on it this spring if we could get it done like.
You may get some growth within it.
If we could get it done. Yeah. If we could get it done like now, like right away, that would be better than nothing, for sure. Yeah. And just to kinda help fill in some of these holes and stuff up here that are twisting ankles and things like that, I think that would be a, I think that would help a lot too.
Aerial it, get some good soil down in it.
Yep, for sure.
Use a ton load of water, use parts.
Oh, yeah.
Things here pretty quick too.
Yeah, I mean, it would, it, you're gonna have to do it like two weeks, is what I would recommend. By the time you come in here and get the dirt put out and everything, so. The only thing you're out right now is just a little starter fertilizer on the grass, which is a hundred bucks or something. That's what I put out here earlier, so. Especially if you put topsoil on. It's not gonna hurt it any. I've got a big rolling aerator, um, but a core aerator would be a, a core aerator would be ideal. Um, and if you could, if we can get that, if we can get water up here, um, like a topsoil sand mix would be even better. After you came in and aerated it, came in with a big roller, but that's what I would, I don't even know who'd call about, uh, a big roller. But we would have to find a tractor or something to pull it with, cause I don't think our little thing would pull it.
Yes, it does. I guess it's it's.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, that's an option.
Yeah.
I imagine you have a few kids in mind.
Awesome, for sure. But yeah, that's my, honestly, my biggest thing is that we've gotta get water up here, cause those kids don't wanna get tackled up here on this, and I don't blame them. And if you get up here in July, it is. I would, I mean, if you're gonna do it though, I'd, I would do it now. Especially if you wanna really use it in summer. I'd bring your topsoil in first and get it filled in, and then I'd come in, yeah. Then I'd come in with a, I'd come in with a core aerator that's gonna drive down six or so inches or something like that, and that'll come in and kinda mix that, those two soil profiles together. Otherwise, you're gonna end up with a like a hard pan, basically, up top here. There's probably already, I mean, this, this is compacted up here, there's no doubt about it. Um, and what'll happen is that water will go down, and it'll just, it'll just set right on top of this up here. And it'll rot your roots out underneath you, and your roots won't, won't take in, so you're gonna have to come in with an aerate, like a um, deep core aerator and really kinda mix those profiles together. Best thing would, honestly, best thing would be to come and aerate it first, put your soil on, and then aerate it again, and really mix them. Would be the ideal situation, but then you're renting that core aerator twice, um, as well, so. But. You're not gonna have a, you're not gonna have a level playing field or whatever, but it'll, at least you'll be better than what you have, I would say, for sure. So, um, yeah.
In your opinion, are we throwing good money at a bad idea by doing that?
No, no, uh. Yeah, no, I don't think we're throwing. Oh, no, no.
You oughta just fix it, fix it right.
I don't know, it wouldn't, but you're not gonna rent that, that core aerator. When they came and did this one, when I first took over doing that, what, has it been two years now? Two, I can't remember. It was like six hundred dollars to rent. And the guy came in and just did it, just aerated the whole thing. Honestly, I mean, no, I don't think you're throwing good money at a bad idea. That's a really good idea. Um, it's gonna make, it's gonna make the grass up here a lot nicer. I don't know if it gives him the, the ideal level playing surface, but it gives, it's a lot better than what, what those kids have, um, for sure. Yeah. You can see what we put on down there. If you look down the middle of the hash marks, I don't know if you guys can see it, starting to come up there in the middle on the crown. That's called HGT. It's, uh, high-growth turf is what it's called. It's a rhizomeal bluegrass seed. And bluegrass typically, if you look here, you see how it clumps typically, like this, and that's what creates a lot of those holes. This stuff spreads like Bermuda, but it holds, but it grows like a cool season grass, and it holds your height, it's your high turf. Um, it's gonna give you the same wear that like fescue will without that clumping effect that a fescue will get, like, you know, like on the outfield there, a ball hits a, hits that, it takes off or something, which is kinda your ideal. And it can be mowed a lot, it can be mowed a lot shorter as well because of that. But, but yeah, like you said, a good, I mean, that's nine hundred dollars a bag, you know, on that. And you guys bought two bags of that, you know, this fall, um, in order to put out six pounds of, in order to put six pounds, or what did we do, four and a half? Um, yeah, I did, but it's been, let's see, did I do it last spring? Yes, I did last spring. Um, honestly, um, your nutrient value's all there. Um, it was lower than what it is down there. Down there, you've got really good nutrient values and everything. Um, your organic matter's pretty low, so we've been fertilizing with, uh, we've been fertilizing with what's called, um, that's reclaimed sewage is what it is, but, uh, or the, melorganite is what, melorganite, have you seen that? And it's like a six-four-oh or something like six-four-four, something like that. And you don't wanna fertilize something really hot in the summertime, cause you'll just burn it off, but, um, if you can increase your organic matter in your soil here, it's gonna really help with your, really help with your water retainage. Um, your water holding capacity and those sort of things as well. Oh, yeah. Yeah, and you're gonna have, I mean, you'll have to come in with a synthetic fertilizer to start, um, for sure, but, um, a starter, cause you're gonna want that higher-end value that, like a, like a thirteen, thirteen, thirteen or something like that. Good general-purpose one or something up top, but, um, I would, you know, I would estimate up here, I'd probably another two bags of seed would give you, cause you're gonna have to put it on a lot heavier than you put on your, um, when you come in, and then you're gonna need some kinda, some kinda mulch on top. If you wanna go with straw or something, that'd probably be the cheapest mulch up here. Bad thing about straw, especially if you don't get real good straws, you can bring in a lot of weed seeds too. Um, and that, that young grass, you obviously don't wanna spray with like a four-way herbicide or something like that. Kill off all your good work, but.
Do you think five thousand can get you started?
Oh, I don't know. I don't know. I can call.
I think it's two hundred dollars a load for
So what do you want me to do? Just email it to you guys? All right. Can we go ahead and get the, go ahead to fix that thing up there on the hill? And we're gonna have to have that no matter what you do up here, so, yeah. Cool. All right, um, what was the lady that said she had topsoil that she, at the board meeting? Sarah, Sarah Moon? So we'll top, so I'll go ahead and get the core aerator. Uh, am I okay to go to five thousand? That's what I'm asking here. Cause I can get a lot done with five thousand. I know that. I can come in, I can put your topsoil. I'm just gonna, cause I mean, this is gonna have to get done in like two weeks, is why I'm saying, so that's why I don't wanna. I'm gonna aerate it.
Aerate it again, plant the seed.
Yep, put the mulch on it. Yep, put the mulch on it.
And you think you can do that, and you're gonna fix the hoses there. So then, you need five grand? Is that just right on the money?
I hope so. I hope so. Um, I don't know how much it's gonna cost for people to, to, to spread it out or to roll it and all that. Um, if you guys know somebody who can, that was to do all, that was to do all the dirt work and move all this dirt and stuff, and to put it, yeah, and you were gonna come in and you were gonna put two thou, you're gonna put ten thousand dollars with sprinkler heads and plumbing and all that. Now you're not putting that in anymore. I'm gonna do, I'm gonna keep it, I'm gonna try to stay at five, is what, and if I have, if I have to, I'll ask, but, um.
It's all gonna be little pieces that he's gotta pick up and make sure we've got everything. Inflationary adjustment covered. Cause then it's, we're getting grass grown, we've got some of those pockets and stuff filled in, it's aerated. We've got Team Ag on top of it.
No, it's.
Might have thirty-five hundred in grass seed. Two bags may not cut it up there.
Might not, but.
Well, I'm more worried about the potholes and the wave and what's going through this thing. If you get that smooth, get some grass grown, and get it to take hold.
Two bags would cover a lot. I, it, cause you're gonna probably put it out about, if you're establishing, you're gonna put in probably about eight pounds of, eight pounds of thousand square foot or so out here. So you got, let's see here, you got, uh, eight pounds a thousand square foot, you're gonna have hundred pounds. That'll do, that'd be twelve thousand square feet. What did you, how wide'd you say a football field was? Forty-three? Hundred and sixty feet? And how long do you wanna go?
Well, right now, we, we have forty yards of the field and ten yards of the infield that gives us fifty.
Fifty?
That takes us to where it just, I don't know what tree was cut out, but there's a big dip over there that keeps it off the hill.
Okay. Would, so hundred and sixty, or sorry, sixty yards, would that be deep enough? So you're at one eighty? So twenty-eight hundred, divided by eight. Thirty-six thousand square feet. Probably three bags of grass seed is what my math works out as, so.
All right, so have I got anything else?
If you guys have any questions, just holler at me. Yeah, thank you, guys. You want this rabbit foot back?
We had one piece here, guys. I wanna give this to you, Bob. This just came up today. All here, and we're gonna talk about it. It's the uh freezer that's outside. I want you to see this, because it's it's a pretty big bill. I kinda wanna get on it, so there's a bunch of food.
That's the top end of the bill. That's if we have to take the unit off the top, cut it all full of freon out of it, cut the lines off.
For a new compressor and a condenser?
No, that's just for a new roof for this. It'd be a rubber, that's got a raised ridge roof on it.
Yeah.
And the more likely the. More likely the foam and stuff on the inside to pull down in it because it's getting moisture into it with the temperature and stuff. But they recommend that we put like a box roof on it with a rubber coat over it. They're gonna go in and put insulation in in the raised ridge part of it. But they're hoping that they can just raise the unit up just enough to get the rubber underneath of it, so it all stays one piece.
You can't lose food.
Well, okay, that's why I wanna make sure. I'm getting ready to do it. I was keeping you in the loop.
Yeah, well, the I mean, we can. The health department's the one that they come in, they came in and they noticed it. Of course, I never go in there, but they noticed that there was a ice buildup on the roof. And then the air and water intrusion is what causes that. It's not like a frost. It's like an actual ice, but well, then. When that ice falls down onto the food, then that causes a health hazard because you're bringing in outside dirty water, whatever you wanna call it, contamination.
You got a motion to approve Bu- uh Butcher's bid? Good with that?
No.
Everybody's made it. Do we have?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Got a motion by Bo. Second by myself, all in favor. Five oh.
Thank you, guys.
Um, did we want to address the building over here? Why we all went and looked at it?
Which which building?
The red one. Red shed.
We just gotta find a place.
We just need a.
Do what? Let's find somewhere we. Go with it.
Well, I mean, we just get a we get a.
I have an idea. I have an idea. I have an idea. April second, the city the city Y pickups. Put it in people's houses. Well, we'll have to have a place to put this up.
Well, we're gonna have to.
I don't know if there's room in that white building.
You want some options for that?
We're either gonna have to put it in.
We're gonna either gonna have to clean out this white block building and put it in there, or we're gonna have to put it in there for the time being and. Figure something out out here or.
Part of that white building floods when it rains, so.
I think we oughta get a Connex, one of them shipping containers.
Get it on one side.
Yeah, you could do that.
Could do that.
They're about they're about three thousand dollars, depending on what size you want.
Yes, and you could paint it and make it look decent, too.
It's an option.
That thing would be super dry.
Yeah, maybe you wanted it.
And it's secure. I mean, you're gonna hardly rip the doors off.
Well, stuff just needs to come out of there. It's it could be there for right now, but you can't you can't let anybody go back in there. And the platform that it sits on or it's about to fall over. I mean, all this needs to be gone.
But if you had two Connex boxes up here, you get rid of that. Well, and then all this. That's a Bobby Potter call.
Or a late law call, get a couple yard dumpsters up here. We get. Coach Duke's.
Another idea would be to get two Connexes, bring them out from the building this way, put a roof over the top of in between them. And then you could put all your.
Right.
Yeah, that is a good idea.
Dean, I got anything else?
We going down to the main building?
We are. Bro, so do we need to adjourn? No, you're just taking that tour. I think you're fine.
Hit pause, Roxanne.